Have each of you signed up paperwork back on the table?
No, sir.
Please sign in. I know you're applicants, but please, just for the record.
Yes, sir.
Sign in. Please first.
Nine six.
Oh, I got that one's not real four.
In this case, it doesn't make that much difference, but in some cases where we got a big crowd, we need them signed in. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to an end. This is the October meeting for the Loudoun County District Board of Appeals. Uh, if everyone would please turn their phones off so we don't have distractions and interruptions. Let me explain how we operate so you can follow and keep up with us. I will call each case by case number and case name. Staff will come to the lectern, give us the report for us to take under advisement as far as what being requested. We've already got paperwork, but they will present it so that everybody hears the same thing. Once they have, once staff has presented the case, there will probably be discussions among board members, questions asked. Once we're satisfied, we understand what is being requested, then I will ask if the applicant is here or someone possibly representing the applicant. If so, and if you would like to give us further information, please come to the lectern. Give us your name and address for the record, give us the information that you would like for us to take under advisement. Once you have presented the information or while you were presenting it, there is possibility there will be questions and discussions among board members and back and forth to try to make sure we understand all facets of the application. Once we're satisfied, we've heard from that side, then I will ask if there are any persons here in support. If so, would you like to give us some additional information that we haven't understood, please come to the lectern and give us your name and address for the record. If we've already heard the information, please don't hammer it with us again, we can remember it. Then I will ask if there are any persons here in opposition, or if there's any persons here that might have questions about what is being requested. Again, come to the lectern, give us the information if you want, or questions that you don't understand. And we will attempt to answer the questions or make sure we understand the opposition. Once we have heard from both sides, normally we will render a decision here today. However, it is within the bylaws, if you feel like information is lacking, or questions are unanswered, or parties need to talk, then we do have the right to postpone action until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, the first case we're gonna call is Loudoun County case, here they are, 2018-17 Mary Pearson, only 187 Madison Highway. Ma'am?
I thought they were getting first.
Ms. Deborah, it's your show.
Thank you, Chair. This property is located at 4187 Madison Highway. The owner is Ms. Mary Pearson, who is in the audience here. Ms. Pearson has submitted an application to ask for variance in section 5.02.01b1 of the UODC as it pertains to the location of an accessory structure. Particularly, in her case, this is a carport. The UODC limits accessory structures to either a side or a rear yard. In Ms. Mary's case, on the southernmost portion of her home is her second tank, and on the northern portion of her lot is trees, which would have caused her hardship as far as trying to locate an accessory structure in either of those areas. In this, um, in this scenario, Ms. Mary had her sign off to construct her 224 square feet carport in the front yard. The structure is located approximately about 50 feet from the front yard property line. She also has a cement drive from probably counties right away all the way up to her existing mobile home. And she's here today to ask for variance for placement of an accessory structure.
All right, any questions, any discussions from the board at this time? All right, thank you, Deborah.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Pearson, is anything you would like to add?
Well, the only thing, you know, like she said, I've got the cement drive all the way up from the road to the front there, and that's why I put the car at the end of it at the front of the truck. Because when the ground's all, it gets real wet behind there, and there's a lot of trees out there, and I just, just wasn't aware of the footage. I, I didn't know I had to permit when I'm down. I thought you only got the permit because you build a room, or build a house, and I wasn't down if I had to head down, but I would have done it.
All right, any questions, any discussions? Is anyone else here in support? Anyone here that has any objections or have questions about what's being asked? Were there any contact at your office, Deborah?
No, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, is there anything else, any other questions you want to discuss? I assume from the location that you, your primary entrance to and exit from the Boldenhall is the front door right there?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions, any discussions? Can I entertain a motion on this request?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
No, please, sorry.
Don't get ahead of things.
I make a motion that we approve the variance that's submitted, citing criteria D.
I have a motion to reject the request as presented, citing criteria D. Mr. Paul, I have a second from Nancy. Okay, Nancy, second, okay. All in favor, raise a hand, please, unanimous. Good luck with it, hope it keeps you right.
So what I have to do now, go get your permit, or what? Oh, oh, just that one. I can do all this.
Okay, the next case that we're gonna call, or I'll call, is city case, application 2018-07 Richie Rose Bush, 990 North St. Augustine Road.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Tracy, it's your showdown.
Thank you. This variance request pertains to signage for our new cookout that is on at 990 St. Augustine Road. It is in a complex on, of course, that's Northern Drive, North St. Augustine. Um, like I said, building a U-Rash complex in the drive, which is specifically a new cookout. We had a signed permit application that came through. Permitted some wall signs, permitted two directionals, but found an directional two meaning boards and two meaning boards and a free standing sign were out of the privileges that I could permit. Reason being, the ordinance allows me to permit one sign, one free standing sign for multi-facility within 50 feet of an entrance permit. Well, in this case, the property is more, largely already developed, but got under construction. And the restaurant across the aisle from the cookout beat them to the punch in speaking terms of signage. So that one particular signage has vested rights in speaking, speaking first. So if we permit the cookout sign, it would need variance for being a second sign, as well as being closer than 300 feet to an already existing sign for multi-facility complex. So two variances for that same free standing sign. The second variance relates to a directional, as pictured on the left. The free standing sign that we're talking about, variance for is on the right. So the free, the directional is on the left, I have priority over for directional, so maybe for entrance, so maybe for internal location. This particular directional is a bit taller and a little bit bigger than what I think. Directionals can be taller than 255, and then larger than 300. This particular directional is six feet tall, rather than 250 tall. And eight square feet in size, bigger than the three square feet maximum, so that's a directional variance. The last variance is for mini boards. They are having two mini boards, they can have as many mini boards as they apply, but there is clearly probably 48 square feet. The two mini boards together are a total of 59.62 square feet, so they're about 11 and a half-ish over what I've been permitting. So, three signs, variance is pertaining to those three particular signs. They already have sign, I permitted what I could, wall signage, two directional, so that's a chosen for other date. They chose to go forward with those while they're going through the variance process. Um, staff reviewed the case, didn't find any hardship, so we recommend without any questions. We're sorry.
A lot of questions. Okay. Okay, what happens, I was reading up here, that you've permitted certain signage until this application comes into effect. Once this is over, what happens to what you have permitted so far?
It, it was wall signage, and unless they ask for more for additional wall signage, that's not going to be a problem.
So they can keep that?
Yes, sir. And they can also go permitted for two directionals. If this third directional is permitted, if the location of the channel is not cleared, it won't be an issue.
Okay, and the directional is the one that's got the extra height in it?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that brings me to this question. What is, why are they requesting or needing, and this may be a question for Mr. Rose Bush, why are they needing a six foot by eight square foot in size sign as opposed to what's permitted?
That would be a question for me.
Okay, um, I was looking at this map of this area, where we've already got Steak and Shake, I think that's the name of that other place, the, um, Asian Restaurant. And it looks like, I mean, I know we've got these rules about no more than 300 feet. But, when this was established, and this may not be a question for you, but when this was established, they didn't take into account, it doesn't seem like we've got a fair playing field for everybody that's gonna be building. Uh, because I was looking at the Steak and Shake sign, and had it been on the other side of their building, instead of what I think is the west, had it been on the east side, would that have fallen within the 300 feet as opposed to being too close now? And what is to keep one business from deliberately stacking the odds for any future business that may come as to where they put their signage?
You're asking some very good questions, very tough questions. To address the issue of distance for another sign, if their sign was proposed to be 50 feet within a, an entrance or exit that did not have signage already, and it was at least 300 feet away from another sign, I could permit it. Now, there's only one entrance exit that does not have signage affiliated with it. And I don't have a picture of it, this is one in the very southern portion of this complex. Um, it doesn't have any signage. I did not measure to see how close that entrance exit is to the Steak and Shake sign. So I can see there is some potential for another sign there, but again, I did not measure to verify that it's 300 feet apart. The second question kind of touched on, we have a lot of multi-facility facilities in the law system, and I've been 15 years, 17, 38 years. When a new facility comes in, they come out with signage to act. They get permitted or any variances, and their signage happens. Sometimes things get redeveloped, out parcels are cut out, things are more random and dissipate. We encourage planning, but sometimes hurt both sides.
Well, it just looks like from this aerial, um, that whoever comes in here to fill in these gaps, they're gonna be facing the same thing. It, it just doesn't seem like there's a level playing field for all of them.
Now, I'm not saying, tell me where you're coming from. When I have new businesses that come through, and they're asking about signage, signage, I explain to them what the signage parameters offer. We have several complexes that are maxed out with free standing signage. The only way they're gonna get additional free standing signage is by way of the variance process. And it's, it's depressing to them when they find out that maybe this is what they need, and they feel like they need a free standing sign to help them on the business. But I wish, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what direction they have to go.
Do you ever find it a bit sentprising to use your description that it, um, prevents them from pursuing it, and they go out for it?
No, Sharon, I do not. Um, I've had discussions with several businesses over the years I've been there. And I'm saying, I'm sorry, your free standing sign in your complex, and the problem, Sharon, happens to a lot of my facilities that are just maxed out with free standing signage. Your free standing sign is already occupied, and this is, that is down, down the block. The door for you, you're having your own free standing sign, a variance, it's pretty similar to yours, is, is more than today. Nine times out of 10, I end up a new one, or they went together, I sign a license, they have wall signage, they have banners, they have a complaint on me. They most generally end up pursuing their, they, that person that has signage for it. Was that the best answer? But most of them, most of them, we need that happen.
Yeah, and then there's one more thing that potentially could impact on what you're sort of heading with. At some point, and it may be getting real close, even though it looks like they got a lot of area to cut out for additional out parcels, you're fixing to start running into parking, uh, numbers of parking spots probably. So, to some degree, that's going to hinder them as much or more as signage. And yeah, just like you're talking about, they could go on to the south end and get on the other side of Steak and Shake, whatever they were gonna put in their shoe store, or whatever. And put something, and they've got an entrance down there that they could give a free standing sign on that entrance, and yeah, it would probably be at least 300 feet from Steak and Shake to the other. But if you tried to go west from the building that they're constructing, and cut out another chunk, you're probably gonna run out of parking space, and they're gonna, not only are they gonna be hogging the new variance for signage, they're gonna be hogging the new variance for parking.
What is the height of Steak and Shake, free standing sign?
That's a good question. It was permitted before I got here, and I can't verify the height. For, for multi-facility free standing signs, LVR was about, became effective nine years ago. Of course, this was permitted before the LVR, but it has not been, multi-facility signage can be 34, 35 feet high, and they are 125 square feet and...
Say that one more time, 34 feet?
34 feet and half, yet walking at 125 square feet and square feet.
Tracy, if you, if you remove the issue about location distance from the existing sign, would this sign be permissible based upon the size? Is it losing the requirements for size?
It does, size and height for none.
And if, if this variance is not granted, would cookout be without a sign on that, at the front alone, St. Augustine? Are there any other options for them?
There would be options to change out a panel at the previous, or the existing signs. They could change out a panel at any one of those existing signs. Or we could explore the possibility of a sign at the other entrance exit.
They could change out a panel on the Steak and Shake sign?
No, the big sign, the main sign.
I mean, if, if, if Steak and Shake, if Steak and Shake said, yes, we'll give you, well...
Oh, yeah, yeah, if they negotiate with Steak and Shake, they could, right?
They could change out a panel on any one of those signs.
By, by right, would they have the right to, to force the owner of the signs to let them change out a panel?
That is the point of the, I mean, landlords and their other businesses. From a safety standpoint, it is sort of, uh, that, that is an option.
Have you had any, um, any, have you received any comments from Steak and Shake, have they? And is there any option to shift the sign further down to the west? Is there, is there any other option rather than to keep it having, essentially what you're gonna have, you grant this variance, you're gonna have, you know, a cookout sign on one side, and a Steak and Shake sign on the other side of the entrance? And you know what, I just see some potential for one blocking out the other. Is there any option to shift the cookout sign down to the western edge of the parcel?
Yeah, two things, it has to be within 50 feet of the entrance exit. The other exits, except for one, already have signage within that 50 feet. So the only other option, potentially, with no variance, potentially because I did not measure to see how close the Steak and Shake sign is to this particular entrance exit, is to move their sign to that, I mean, the entrance.
You know, there, there's one other option, unless I'm wrong, and I think it's within the power of this board, given they wanted to word it that way. Right now, the variance request on that sign is because it's within 90 feet. The variance is 90 feet, 300 less than 10, because next to the Steak and Shake. If they move this sign 90 feet west, that meets...
Towards Panda Express?
If they go 90 feet that way, it meets the 300 feet, but now they would need a variance for the 50 foot within 50 foot.
And, and we didn't advertise that, so we can't...
And it's, and well, I don't know, and, uh, so again, it falls within the authority of this board to do that kind of stuff. And I don't know that it has to be advertised, because it was determined here at the board during the open meeting. But I'm not the lawyer, you've got any feeling for that?
I think we've got, this board has authority to condition approval of variance request. Would, the question would be, is that a condition of the current variance request, or would that be a separate, wholly separate variance request?
Well, that, that's what I'm saying, because it was not advertised, but it was discussed and handled in open meeting, even though we're gonna have a monster audience. Would that suffice, or would we have to postpone and re-advertise if that was what they would like to do? If it potentially looked like the variance not be, might not be requested for the 90 foot? And I understand what you're talking about, if, if you had more space between the two signs, you'd have less blockage, one blocking the other from the directions.
And, and the variance you're talking about is what Panda Express does, right, that's how they got their sign there? Isn't it the 50 foot from the entrance variance?
We have Panda Express, and we also have another entrance on North St. Augustine Road that has this sign in the middle of it.
Tracy, can you turn it on a little?
The other concern here is there might not be the space to move this sign farther down, given the distance of the right away from the curb edge. You know, you might be requiring them to tear out parking space and build an island out there just in order to put a sign on it.
Right, and, and I'm not saying that that is the best idea, I'm just saying that is a possibility.
Right.
We, we did that several, several years ago, there was something similar to this, and, and order to, the, the biggest problem there is they didn't want to be as close, there was objections, they didn't want their sign, because it was gonna block this sign, and we actually told a gerrymandered it a little bit, and modified the, the variance slightly. But anyway, that's, just, just for discussion. Any other questions, any other discussions?
Tracy, um, if, if the board agreed to a sign, and yet dropped it down a little bit, so that it may not be quite as high as Steak and Shake, but they still had a, had signage here at the road, is that an option?
That's a possibility as well, and it's only variances for an additional sign, again, an additional sign or an entrance exit, and this was watching the Steak and Shake sign. Right now, they're proposing a sign that's about 75 square feet, about 34 feet tall.
And how tall is that Panda sign?
It's... Dabbling, dabbling.
I think it met, because I don't recall it very...
It, it met home, the only thing that Panda Express asked for variance for was being 50 feet within the free standing, because it was variance in the entrance, because of the ground, St. Augustine Road. So that was the only variance they asked for. Um, multi-facility can be no taller than, no larger than 125 square feet, no taller than 34 feet tall.
I'm not really estimating, so I have to have a visual to see, to know what I'm talking about. It's like you asked me to estimate.
Is the concern the board wants to do signs right next to each other, or that Steak and Shake might be angry with it?
Oh, no, I mean, Steak and Shake, that would have no effect, but maybe it would be, um, help on the aesthetics. And I don't see where coming to the west side of this business is gonna work with the proximity it is to the basic entrance of the whole area.
I understand that.
And maybe it would be more tolerable to have something still visible, but shorter.
Any other questions, any other discussions? We haven't talked anything about any of the board, we haven't talked anything about the directional sign, other than the signs, anybody?
I have some questions about that, but I'll wait till our applicant comes in.
Okay, good enough. All right, thank you, Tracy. Is there anything you would like to add, sir?
Yes, sir, you don't want? My name is Richie Rose Bush, I am president of my own sign, I built signs for cookout restaurants, Saks Street Restaurants, other places. Um, I can answer any questions y'all have. I think the best thing to say is, is that's the three variances we are asking for, two of them, are because this cookout is unique, um, because it has two driveways. Uh, and that is specifically why the directional sign is six feet tall, rather than the, the, let me back up. The, the signs we got permitted are the signs of the non-alien buildings that cookout, fresh hamburgers, or... That's what I'm saying. And then the directionals are the small directional, say, inner exit, they're the ones that get people in and out of the drive. So you come in this exit, you go out, or come in this entrance, go out that exit. Those are the ones we got permitted, we have installed. Those are the ones we got permitted, we have installed. The directional that we're asking the variance for is mounted in the middle of an island, because as, as cars come in and they turn upon it and realize it's a double drive-through. The two-foot is not really ideal, because you can't necessarily see it from your car or your pickup truck. So that's why the sign is, is six feet tall and says double drive-through, use either line. So that's, that explains why we're asking for a variance which is pretty significant from what you allow on the directional sign, but there's a reason behind this. And so people, when they're pulling, they know which way to go, and when they get to the yield portion, they can go in their drive.
Actually, I have a question. Now, I have one more question about this sign. Will I be able to see this sign from?
No, ma'am.
And, um, do we imagine that people don't know how to use a double drive-through? Like every McDonald's in the world has a double drive-through. We know we don't get hurt a lot.
You would be surprised. Uh, yes, I, I agree with you. Um, my, my thought, my thought process is common sense, I mean, you can figure it out. But you would be surprised in this business, uh, what you see people do in, uh, in drive-throughs. So, so they put, they put that there, it's reflective, the, the, the graphics on it. The sign is not illuminated, but the graphics themselves are reflected like such sign. So when people come at night, this cookout's open, and this one's open at two, three o'clock in the morning, uh, they, they can see it in, in branch.
Can you, can, can you flip to the, the diagram of the site, the site plan? So, we got a sign called out, here's his preview board, but there's two menu boards called out, and the preview board called out, I'm not seeing where this directional sign's called out.
Yes, sir. The, the preview board is actually something that was on the plans that they mixed, uh, they, they don't have it.
Can you show us where the sign's gonna be?
Oh, yes, sir.
It's not drawn on our draw.
Um, I'm sorry, do you mind?
It's, it's invisible, ma'am, I don't know.
So you, as the cars come around right here, they pull into here, there's this concrete island right here. The sign is mounted right there at the island. So as they, as, as cars pull around, as they make the turn, they can see that, and then they can go this way back.
And that's the back of the sign, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, of the three variances that we're asking for, that's the one that cookout can do without. Uh, the, the most, I should say. If we had to rank them in terms of priority, that was, that was at the bottom of the table. The menu boards, um, I know you're allowed forty-eight square feet for menu boards. I'm sure when that provision was written, the majority of menu boards, uh, they don't have double drive-throughs. Each menu board is just under thirty square feet. Now, we've looked prior to even asking for a variance, we've looked at cutting the menu board down to twenty-four square feet each. I don't know if you've ever been to a cookout, but they have more menu items than any restaurant, and it, I mean, it takes forever to order, because you don't know what you're, what you're looking for. There's no way to, to fit all their menu items onto a twenty-four square foot menu board. So, so just nobody's doing it. So, of the forty-eight allowed, we're just asking for eleven more square feet to split amongst the two. Now, y'all have any questions about menu boards?
Anybody got questions for menu board or directional?
I've got a question, and this might be for, for Tracy. On this sign that points you in two different lanes. Tracy, don't we have multiple fast food places? I'm not a big fast food person. Don't we have multiple places with double lanes? And how high are those signs?
Most of, most of what is out there now with double drive-throughs either was permitted before the LBR gave them that. Or what has been permitted after the LBR gives that.
And what is kind of for high?
Or, um, I think it's not for menu boards.
For menu, no, not for menu boards. Or for those directional, not the menus, not the ones coming in the driveway. I'm talking about the ones that, that conforming of double lanes, you know?
Thirty.
Thirty.
So now, hey, is the maximum height for a, for a directional?
What, I've seen some that have a thing that like hangs over the lane.
Right, there are, there are several out there.
That have this, that's usually the lane.
They have light lines, like, you know, that's, that's just considered.
Those have not been permitted.
Oh, those are for rule breakers, those ones that hang over the lane.
Or do they just not count as signs?
It, it honestly wasn't enough for me to approach the issue of the sign.
Well, I don't see how you could be in a line and see a two-foot tall sign that says double lanes choose.
You know, I don't want to be in a line and not know to go pick one.
Well, I know, but we're not strong.
Pick a line. I did do that before, before, I picked a line, there's eight lines, pick a line. Pick the shortest one, if you wanna get out of here fast on the west, just wait.
And in all honesty, we don't, I have the same very unusual approach on two. I have the same many issues with directional.
And as a general rule, directionals are normally seen at entrances. And you rarely see a directional in this kind of situation.
And in all honesty.
In this situation, the printed part is facing back of the building. So if you're driving down the highway, you're not gonna see it, one, because it's way back there. Number two, you're gonna see the back of the sign, it's just gonna be a solid color.
I see a lot of, and I get a lot of questions about folks who want to put drive-through display painted on the asphalt of the parking lot. Or they have arrows guiding you wherever on the parking lot, which doesn't.
I think that would make sense.
Which does not need permission.
Any other questions? One?
Um... This pretends to the big sign.
Yes, ma'am.
And since I haven't been able to get this question answered, you're a sign man. What is your estimate of the height of the Steak and Shake sign?
I think the Steak and Shake sign is supposed to be thirty-five.
And what is the Panda one?
I think from the Panda, depending on which, uh, every, every place, different counties and cities, road grade, that's one thing. But I would say from where the pole comes out of the ground on top of the sign, I would think they max that sign, just because it's sitting in a hole, I would think that top of the ground or top of that sign is thirty-five. The sign that we're proposing, just because we, we knew we had to apply the variance, and we knew the Steak and Shake would come to play. We decided to, to not maximize what we could go for, with thirty-five foot tall sign, or a hundred and twenty-five square feet. We actually went for a twenty-four foot tall sign, at seventy-five square feet, to maybe get it under and just say, hey, look, we just want some.
So you, y'all are doing what I was asking earlier about maybe dropping your sign a little bit?
Now, in, in, in full disclosure, I have not pulled the tape on the, uh, Steak and Shake sign. I don't, I do not know with, with, uh, the exact measurement of that sign was. But I would think most places, in, in Steak and Shake, like Panda Express, or my Saks customers, or Domino's, or whatever, they, they try to maximize their sign. They usually don't come in and just, you know, oh, well, just, we just stir it on at this height, which they usually try to do the most.
I, I have a question about the signage that's on the building which is already permitted. That's only on the front, or it's on the front and the side?
It's on the front and the side, yes.
Okay, awesome.
Any other questions, any discussions?
Have, have you considered what we were talking about earlier with shifting, potentially shifting the sign down?
I think cookout would be okay with moving the sign down. Uh, the only issue there would be, um, I think initially when they did all their grading and all their electrical, they've already run power out there, I think there would, there would be any expense to try to figure out a way to cut, cut the paint better than asphalt. So I think that's already been done. But, uh, I think, I think cookout would be open to doing something like that, just because they love the sign.
How would, how would doing something like that affect? Looks like there's an entrance and exit right here, kind of on western end, I'm thinking.
Where, where are the signs located? Doesn't necessarily affect, as long as it's on, uh, St. Augustine Road? For visibility, to, to compete with their competition, which is Steak and Shake, and Panda Express, and Alton Road, and everybody else. As long as they have visibility, I don't think cookouts too concerned if it's, if it's, uh, where it's shown on the site plan, or if it's on the property and it's moved up to Panda Express, I think they'd be okay with that. Matter of fact, I know that what they, they told me, they said, give us a sign, we need a sign.
Tracy, is there a distance that a sign base or pole, um, has to be off of, off of the right-of-way line?
It has to be at least five feet.
At least five feet.
Is that from the base, or is that from the edge of the sign, the edge of the sign?
Edge of the sign.
If the sign has like an monument type base, or that has to be at least five feet off the front foot?
Well, with this pole sign being, it's a hundred and eighty inches wide, and the pole being in the middle, so it's, it can be four and a half feet to one, to one side.
The, the whole signage, including the web tag, working in the signage, the entire sign has to be at least five feet off the front foot?
Right. The, the box up top has to be five feet from the right of way, but I, I know I found that out the hard way with my sense.
Is there any overhead electric or anything in there that would?
It's your question. There is, there's a pole right there on corner called, on your site plan. Is, is, uh, let me ask this question, is the moving of the sign, is, is the main thing, the, the distance from a, or is it just to block or angle of the station? Because if it is, we could even go lower, we could go twenty feet if that's case, rather than, if it are possible.
Well, my concern, I think, is two-fold. Block it, not the Steak and Shake sign, and then also just clustering of many signs right there. It doesn't seem as if along St. Augustine, that's really, that's, but it doesn't seem like there's more space between the signs. But, you know, also playing into this is the fact that Steak and Shake hasn't proposed a variance request, and it's properly advertised, and they're not here, so.
This, this is not the proper time to ask that, but the Steak and Shake contacted office and anything about this? Any other questions, discussions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have no other persons here, unless they're in gothic attire, uh, for Hank's for Halloween. And you just said Steak and Shake, has anybody else contacted you else?
No calls.
Any other discussions, ladies and gentlemen? Freestanding sign meets height and square footage, we just got to decide ninety-foot variance illegal where it is, or whatever other choice you might want. If it has been put on the table by Mr. Bush, Rosebush, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, that if you feel like we need to slice it a foot or two off, it sounds amicable to that. The freestanding, I mean, the, uh, directional sign, it's open to both anything that you're wanting to make the motion. And the menu boards, if he had one menu board instead of two, if he had one lane instead of two, he'd be within compliance on that. It's just when you ask the second one, he's sliding out back. So, anybody making a motion?
I'm making one.
No rules for it.
I make a motion to approve the variance that would be an additional sign at the entrance that is within three hundred feet of another sign. We want him to have the freestanding sign at the size and height that he has. That we reject the directional sign that says use two lanes. And that we, um, approve the cumulative total for the drive-through signage, um, of eleven feet. Um, and I think that he does actually have hardship on that parcel. I think that because it was developed before we had these rules, um, that there was a hardship that we're satisfying.
Okay, we have motion on the floor. Do I need to restate it? Everybody understand it? I have second from Hanson. Any other discussions before I vote? All in favor, please, raise a hand. Unanimous, we love with it, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have approval of the minutes from last month. I looked at them, didn't see anything I had problems with. Anybody else see the typos, additions, deletions, corrections? Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes, as presented.
I have motion, I have second.
Sir.
I have a second, all in favor, raise a hand. Unanimous, thank you very much. And now, the real problem that we've got to deal with. Nominations of Chair and Vice Chair for two thousand and nineteen.
What, what, why do you think this is not, what were you gonna do this the next month, in December?
I'm not real sure why, but it was suggested that we put it on this month to give everybody a little time to think about it, maybe. Uh, we won't actually vote on it until the December meeting, so.
Okay, so we're planning.
But if y'all, you know, whatever's done, and you decide you don't like, whatever it is, we still, we can undo it, we just open the nominations back up. You said so.
Your chair and Matt is vice chair, is that right?
Correct.
And, and why did you bring this up as a problem, why is this a problem?
I do think it's a problem of it. Because every time it comes up, I always say, now, look, I've been doing this a long time. Y'all feel like somebody else needs to do it, and you want fresh blood, and you want different views or whatever, and I'm all for it. Yeah, I.
Are you trying to say you'd like to become a board?
I have contemplated doing that. But no, I, I, you know, if, if y'all want me to do it again, I will be led to do it again. If y'all want somebody else to do it, my feelings are not hurt.
My sentiments are the same.
And I, so, after saying all that, the floor is open for nominations for Chair and Vice Chair for two thousand and nineteen.
Would y'all be willing to swap places? Matt could be the Chair, Matt could be the Vice Chair?
I, I, I'm here, sir. So, y'all?
It doesn't matter, whatever your pleasure is.
I think y'all do it good, John. Um, I like how it is, but I'm not voting switching it up here.
Is that a nomination for?
I've nominated Mr. Trump as Chair, and Matt as Vice Chair.
I have nomination for me to return and Matt to return in the same capacity. Any other nominations?
I, I nominate the opposite here. Matt be the Chair and Matt be the Vice Chair.
That's the trouble with these topics.
Everybody knows we aren't troubled.
That's fine.
Well.
So now we have some time to think about that, right?
Well, I'd say, then put it this way, with this poll, will anybody, are there any other, not any third nomination combination? Okay, I need motion to close nominations. I make a motion to close nominations. I have motion to close, and I have second to close. So the slate to be thought about, as you just heard, and it will not be voted on until the December meeting. So if anybody has anything, all I would need for any kind of a change to either one of any kind is a motion to reopen nominations at the November meeting. And if that motion is put out and seconded, then the nomination will be reopened to whatever. Otherwise, that would be the slate to pick from in December. Okay, any new business in the old business? We stand in adjournment, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your attention and attendance.